Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this regular session of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, March the 23rd, and this is our first time back in chambers in a long, long time. So I'm so glad to see everybody out here, live and in person, and my colleagues and our staff, and everyone who is watching from home, either on Katz or who will be joining us by Zoom, which we do have that option available to us. As we begin this meeting tonight, I will start by asking our clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Here.
Volin?
Sims?
Here.
Scambalory?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. To summarize our agenda this evening, we do have two sets of minutes to approve for February 2nd, the regular session, February 24th, the State of the City, and then we will have reports from council members, followed by reports from the mayor and city offices. We do have a report from the Environmental Commission, and that is followed by any reports from council committees, and then the first opportunity this evening for public comment on matters not on tonight's agenda. That will be followed by appointments to boards and commissions. We will then have legislation for first readings. This will be a little bit of a departure, and we will hear ordinance 22-05 to vacate public parcels to 16.5-foot-wide alley segments located between West First Street, West Second Street, South Rogers Street, and South Morton Street. City of Bloomington Redevelopment Commission is the petitioner, followed by ordinance 22-06 to amend Title VIII of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection to establish a historic district regarding the Johnson Creamery Historic District. And then we will move into legislation for second readings and resolutions, and that will involve Resolution 22-08, Resolution to Opt Back Into Opioid Settlement Pursuant to Indiana Code, and that will be followed by then ordinance 22-06 to amend Title VIII of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection to establish a historic district regarding the Johnson Creamery Historic District. And this will require a unanimous vote to hear it in one evening, so when we get to that point in the meeting, we will have a discussion on the matter and then hold the vote to see if we will be continuing with that as a second read this evening. We will then be hearing a second opportunity for public comment for anyone who's not had the opportunity to address the council on matters of concerns in the first round. Again, this will be for any matter not on tonight's agenda, and that will be followed by a discussion about our council schedule before we adjourn for the evening. So let us now move into our approval of minutes.
Madam President, I move that we approve the minutes, council minutes of February 2nd, 2022, the regular session, and February 24th, 2022, special session.
Second?
All right, moved in seconded. All in favor, please say aye of approving those minutes, or first, are there any corrections to those minutes? All right, seeing none. All in favor of accepting, say aye.
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 All right, those minutes are adopted. Now we move into reports for council members, and I will start to my left with Councilmember Piedmont Smith, if you have any reports this evening.
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
No report.
Thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty?
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you, Madam President. I have two items. One is, I think it's important that we all remain aware of what's happening in Ukraine, and I certainly have been speaking out, at least in terms of contacting representatives in the White House about it and the necessity for a negotiated settlement. Of course, that would involve the withdrawal of Russian troops, but I think it's very important that this not escalate, and so I think it's incumbent upon citizens to contact their representatives and speak out and make sure that two nuclear powers do not go into direct confrontation. The second item is, I'll make an additional plea that I've made in the past, and that is for trees to be placed in the Gentry Crest neighborhood. This was an obligation of the city that was fell on in our lap years ago when the developer failed to put in the necessary infrastructure. We did fulfill the infrastructure needs in terms of paving the neighborhood, putting in a detention pond, but the trees are lacking. The trees are available, but they're but the city proposes that the residents be charged for them. I think that it's our obligation to fulfill this infrastructure. We didn't take the bond, as we should have, from the developer, so the responsibility falls on us. So I make a plea to the administration again to please fulfill that obligation, put the 35 to 40 trees in that neighborhood, and make good on it. So, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. Very brief report, Madam Chair. Today is my 43rd wedding anniversary. Just want to give a shout out to my lovely wife, Doris. Thank you.
Good call. Councilmember Scambalory?
It's hard to top that. So, yes, I just want to extend an invitation. My April constituent meeting is coming up on Saturday, April 2nd. That's a week from this coming Saturday, but this is our last regular session in which I can announce that. But it is, again, Saturday, April 2nd, at 1:30 PM, still via Zoom, one more time, and then we'll reevaluate when May comes. But you can join via the link at sueforcitycouncil.com. There's a join button on the lead page, and that'll get you into the meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you. At this point in the meeting, we had set aside some time to do something that we have not been able to do over the past two years because of the pandemic and because of the shutdown, and that is to issue the commemorative gavel for the presiding officers. But since one of our presiding officers is not with us, I may want to wait and save this for the end of the meeting. Is that possible to do? Are we expecting Councilmember Volin? Has anyone heard from him?
I haven't heard otherwise.
Okay. Typically, what happens at the end of the year, the current president passes on.
He's just walking in.
Ah, is he just walking in?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. We'll go ahead and do this. For the past two years, the council presidents have had the additional heavy lift of presiding during the pandemic when things were shut down, and Councilmember Volin had the ability to get started in his term, but then of March of 2020, of course, everything went electronic, and we were no longer able to meet in person. So we had to skip that preliminary nicety, which is to award the gavel to the succeeding president. So at this time, we'd like to catch up with a little bit of that tradition, and so I will go ahead and get started. It will be my honor to pass the gavel to President Sims, who presided during a very difficult year, again, due to the pandemic and a number of other things, but his presidency was historic, and therefore I think it is suitable and proper that we award him with the gavel that represents his leadership during 2021. And now I will give President Sims the opportunity to do the same thing for his predecessor, and he has the commemorative gavel for President Volin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I don't think I could say what you've said any better. But what I will say is that President Volin in the year 2020 was the first one there when we got hit with the pandemic and got into the electronic and the government's executive governors' executive orders and those sorts of things. It takes a special type of leadership to navigate those sorts of things, and I'm here this evening to say that President Volin, I think, did a pretty decent job, and I'd like to present him with his gavel, if he'll accept it.
Thank you very much, and now we turn our attention to the first opportunity for public comment. If we could get a show of hands of how many people are here to speak on matters not on tonight's agenda.
Can we go to the?
Oh, 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 my apologies. I am getting way ahead of myself here. We now have a report from the mayor's office, city offices, and this will be Matt Caldi on behalf of the Environmental Commission presenting the annual report. Thank you very much for joining us this evening.
All right. All right. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'm here tonight to present the 2021 Annual Report for the Bloomington Environmental Commission. My name is Matt Caldi, and I'm the current vice chair of the Environmental Commission. The EC currently has 10 members: Carrie Albright, Sam Armstrong, myself, Don Egert, Mike Litwin, Megan Murphy, David Parkhurst, Scott Shackelford, Luke Swain, and Adamea Whitney. Additionally, the City of Bloomington Senior Environmental Planner Linda Thompson serves as our staff liaison and administrator. And finally, EC intern Ben Sheriff has been doing a little bit of everything for us this year. Both Linda and Ben have been invaluable contributors to the commission, especially as we navigate these current virtual and hybrid meeting times. As 2020 was before it, 2021 was a considerable challenge for the Environmental Commission. The pandemic once again forced us to meet virtually on Zoom and prevented us from hosting tabling or in-person events. While at times it has felt like these limitations have reduced the scope of what the commission can accomplish, I'm pleased to report that we were able to achieve a great deal considering these circumstances. Throughout the year, the EC has continued doing outreach activities, produced reports, and reviewed development petitions. We started off the year by submitting comments and amendments to the draft Climate Action Plan, suggested everything from typo corrections and formatting changes to description alterations and adjusted implementation priorities. I'm not sure how many of our suggestions were incorporated into the final document, but I'm proud of the work that the commission put in in the early months of 2021. We then rounded out the spring with a giveaway of at least 100 two-year-old white oak saplings. Hopefully, many of those trees will contribute to local ecosystem health and the City Tree Canopy Goals for generations to come. Since 1971, the Environmental Commission has been advising the City of Bloomington on how its actions and policies may preserve and enhance the quality of Bloomington's environment. Therefore, this past summer marked the 50th anniversary of the commission's formation, and we celebrated by compiling a report on the EC's history, holding a virtual Eco Heroes art contest, and hosting a virtual panel discussion. The history of the Bloomington Environmental Commission was assembled by Commissioner Mike Litwin and features a decade-by-decade breakdown of commissioners appointed, top commission priorities, major developments reviewed, and an extensive list of EC activities. And though there's no immediate plan for publication of the document, it should provide an excellent foundation that we can build upon and update for the next 50 years. The theme for Eco Heroes in 2021 was Mission Lower Emissions, and while the total number of submissions was lower than that of most in-person years, there were high-quality entries in a diverse mix of media. We received 2D art, 3D art, written work, performance art, and even a couple of video game-style coding submissions. It was great to have the contest back after canceling it in 2020, and we're now accepting entries for our 2022 contest with the theme Fighting Fragmentation, and those entries are due on Friday, April 8th. We wrapped up celebrating our 50th anniversary by hosting a virtual panel discussion with the topic of What Will Bloomington Look Like in 50 Years? Guest speakers Jared Alexander, Ben Brabson, Spencer Ghul, and Shelley Suttles engaged in an environmentally focused conversation filled with insights from each individual's unique experiences and expertise. I think the forum was a great success, and I expect that we'll build on this experience if the commission chooses to host another such discussion sometime in the future. The EC is entering 2022 with a big project in the works and plans to take on several more. We're close to launching a Habitat Connectivity Pledge, which aims to fight habitat fragmentation and build or strengthen wildlife corridors. As a part of the pledge, homeowners and landowners across Bloomington will be asked to plant and preserve native species on their property. We're planning to release an interactive map so individuals can mark their contributions, which will hopefully show increased habitat connectivity across many neighborhoods. At our January meeting, we formed an initial list of goals for 2022, which included making changes in order to continue our planning committee work, working to enforce bans on invasive species sold in shops, beginning air quality measurements and assessments, petitioning the city to increase hand, small, and simple grants, encouraging citizens to reduce waste, and motivating homeowners to adopt residential solar. We'll attempt as many of these proposals as we can in 2022, in addition to any new projects that may become sudden priorities over the course of the year. I, for one, am excited to get to work. Thank you once again for the opportunity to share the 2021 Annual Report. I'd also like to thank the council and the office of the mayor for their continued support of the EC. Respectfully submitted, Matt Caldi, Vice Chair of the Environmental Commission.
Thank you very much, Mr. Caldi, and would you entertain any questions, if the council has any for you?
Yes, of course.
Anyone have any questions regarding the annual report for the Environmental Commission? Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Caldi. Could you share again the theme for the Eco Heroes for 2022?
Oh, yeah. For this year, it's Fighting Fragmentation. It's supposed to kind of align with our Habitat Connectivity Plan. That way, fragmented areas that might weaken biodiversity because animals can't travel from one area to the other very successfully would be improved by either creating corridors of habitat or even just kind of stepping stone style, so everyone's yard counts. You know, every tree can help a bird get closer to others of the same species and strengthen the ecosystem.
Great, and you would direct people to the city's website for more?
I would, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you for the report. Two brief things. So the wildlife corridors, the residents are asked to participate to describe what they have, for instance, in their homes, regards?
Yeah, there's going to be, I don't know exactly how they're rolling out the report. I know there's going to be a series of presentations that I haven't personally been a part of putting together, but it involves any current native species you have and also encouraging to plant further native species. And if individuals so choose, they could mark on a map roughly where it is and roughly what square footage or acreage they've contributed so that we can get an idea of the improved coverage.
Terrific. And the other question I had is, and I'm sure you'll probably do this, especially Mike Litwin, who used to work in fisheries and wildlife, but to determine corridors, you're going to be looking at deer vehicle collisions, I assume, because deer are crossing, you know, corridors, vehicular corridors, you know, in places where we could apply signage, for instance, and warn people that wildlife cross there. Is that part of the idea?
As far as I know, there hasn't been any consideration of signage or anything like that. It was more about just encouraging increased plant life in those areas that form corridors that the animals can travel across.
Sure. I'm just saying that we could utilize that data in order to place proper signage in to try to minimize risk.
Yeah, I know. I know a fair amount of GIS work has been done to help determine kind of the highest priority areas, and I would imagine that some of that would prove beneficial.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Again, we appreciate, oh, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you for your report. Is there any prohibition currently against selling certain invasive species in Indiana?
Yes, the state of Indiana has a, I can't remember what it's called. I think the terrestrial species list that lists quite a few species that are banned. Unfortunately, the Cala repair is not among those, and it's really enforced by the Indiana DNR. What we're looking to do on the preventing the sales of invasive species front is less of an enforcement thing and more of educational material, so that both homeowners and landowners will plant things that aren't invasive and will also, if they spot invasives at big-box stores or anywhere else, will kind of demand a better product because the market seems to be driven by that, and I've heard indications that that's already beginning to happen, so.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just looked on the Environmental Commission website, and there's some guidelines for natural landscaping and other native species. So if you all are listening and wanting to get into gardening and making sure that you're not planting something invasive, then the City Environmental Commission has information there for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Caldi. We appreciate the work of the Environmental Commission. Thank you. All right, now we move to any report from council committees. Do we have any this evening? Seeing none, let us, oh, excuse me, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, on behalf of the Climate Action and Resilience Committee, I should mention that we will be having a rescheduled first quarter meeting next Thursday. I believe that is, no, Tuesday, my apologies. Tuesday, six days from tonight, March 29th, at 6:00 PM. And I believe, Mr. Lucas, is that in the chambers here, or is it in the McCloskey?
McCloskey.
McCloskey Room, thank you. So I believe Packet and Agenda should go out, or sorry, Materials and Agenda should go out in the materials with Council Packet on Friday. That's all. Thank you.
Any other reports, council committees? Now we turn to the public, and I skipped two major reports here. This is your opportunity to speak. If we could have a show of hands from people here in the chambers, who would like to speak? I see two hands. And we will go ahead and begin. This is kind of the maiden voyage of doing the hybrid with both Zoom participation and in-person. So let's start with those of you who are here. If you will come to the podium, and remembering our protocol, we like you to sign in as you make your statement, and we will have up to five minutes for a public comment.
Hi, thanks. I'm Greg Alexander. Sorry. So a little history, maybe 15 years ago or so, the city started putting in transportation plans, a trail that would become the Cascades Path that was, it was going to be awesome. It was going to connect the city, you know, the north end of, you know, Walnut where it meets Old 37. It was going to connect that, a low-stress bike and ped connection all the way to North High School, and that's a valuable transportation link that's in a neighborhood that's got no transportation links for bike and ped, and actually a lot of demand for it as well. So that was awesome, and they had this idea that they were going to have Parks and Rec do it, because Parks and Rec has this superpower, which Public Works didn't have, in that they'll ask for money for a bike and ped project. You know, this was like 2009. And so, brilliant, you know, they asked for the money, they got the money, and they built a trail by Griffey Lake, and then they got the money again, and they built a trail. They continued the trail from Griffey Lake to Cascades Park, and they did this again and again and again. They built a trail to the golf course now, but not to North High School. And this is kind of what you should expect. When Parks builds transportation infrastructure, they look at it as a way to recreationally connect different parks' facilities. They, a planner, a transportation planner, would start at the center of the city and work out, they would do that connection from the city to the Cascades Park first, because that's the one that everybody will actually use, and then once people are using it, then you can extend it, branch it out to the other parks, to North High School. So they finally, after four or five different phases, they finally came to this body in 2018 and asked for bicentennial bonds, and they got $2 million to build the connection from Walnut Street to Cascades Park, and they spent it, and they didn't provide that connection. I don't really want to come here and be really negative about city staff. Usually, they're doing their jobs, even when I disagree with them or it has a bad result, but in this case, it was dishonest use of taxpayer funds. Those are bonds that my taxes pay for, that your taxes pay for, that this body oversaw. And in that same bond, they were given $1 million to make a trail, recreational trail at Griffey, that was specifically going to go over the dam and connect the end of the Cascades Trail to the Griffey path that already exists. And they specifically said they weren't going to spend that on the east side of the lake. They said they were going to spend it on the dam, and they didn't do that either. They spent that money on the east side of the lake, exactly what they said they wouldn't do. And so the Cascades Trail still doesn't connect to anything. It's completely useless for transportation, and my God, does that part of town really need a bike and ped transportation network? And we have spent literally $4 or $5 million without getting any bike or ped transportation facility. So when people say, oh, Bloomington just wastes a bunch of money on bike and ped transport nobody uses, it's true, you know? And so now we've got the mayor is proposing another set of bonds, and we're putting transportation projects in Parks Bonds again. Literally, those exact same two projects are again in Parks Bonds and then a couple others. Why are we doing this through Parks? I urge you with all my heart, do not ever let Parks run a transportation facility. Do not let them run transportation funding. Vote down those bonds. Those are worthy, worthy projects, and they should be managed by a transportation group. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Next up for a public comment, and while we are waiting for someone to make their way to the podium, do we have any takers on Zoom this evening?
At this time, there are no raised hands.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. You now have five minutes.
Good evening, council members. How are you? Good to see you. I'll be brief.
And if you would please state your name for the record.
Terry Amfler. I live on East Wimbledon Lane. My wife and I live on East Wimbledon Lane in Bloomington. No back report, for those who don't know. The organizational assessment of boards and commissions, this is brief. I hope to write something up and give you my two cents if I can get time. And consultant reports generally make me nervous, at least before I read them anyway, for different reasons. Not so much because consultants are evil, but because with the criteria they have for making the recommendations and what they're looking at is sometimes not in fully formed as it might be and fully informed as it might be, in my opinion. And there's some good things in here, I think. Some of the onboarding side, the formal requiring recording of some of the sessions, and the should get it right, recording of audio and video of their meetings and post-materials, these are all solid things. The consolidation stuff is interesting, not because it's all, and I don't want to throw out all babies with all bathwater, but this reminds me, the way it's written and the vibe of it, if you mind my non-academic language, is the same way certain public management, public administration literatures, some of it was very new public management, it's like efficiency, effectiveness, outsourcing, if you will, and others such, and only later to come back around to things like public service, democracy, public participation, and such as well. So I'm afraid, excuse me, I'm fixing my mask so I can talk properly. I just think a little bit here, I'd be at least cautious with some of these recommendations to make sure that the criteria for not just efficiency and effectiveness, staff time and such, which are as real as anything. But what about democracy, civic engagement, citizenship, informed public, and related? I don't say these are one-to-ones. They never are, but they're not unrelated. And I think the language in the report and its recommendations are very small, actually, and they don't think about what community advisory boards really are and what they're for and what they can do. And so anytime we're making decisions, you're looking at this much of it, you may not make as fully informed a decision. And I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Amfler. Anyone else from the public here in chambers would like to take the podium, sign in, please, and state your name, and then you will have five minutes to make your comment.
My name's Darrell Ruble, West Side resident. I was at home five minutes ago and was watching you guys. I'm glad to see you guys back up here where people can come in and see you. And I had to come down here, you know. Had a little incident the other day up here north of town by, on College Avenue going into Cascades and Old 37, homeless camp down over the hill there, and I called the mayor's office. What's going on there, man? Because there's a creek that runs down through that runs into Cascades, and homeless have that thing just trashed. Bet there's two dumpsters of trash down over that hill, and there's that waterway that runs down to Cascades. And in the summer, them little kids like to get down, if you've seen them down by the playground, they get in that little creek that runs across the, thing's got that, and they kind of weighed there. I thought, man, something's got to be done, you know? So I called mayor's office. Well, that's a DNR property, okay? So I called DNR. I'm kind of concerned. Called DNR, I said, hey, I said, can you look into that? Well, that's the city property. So Mr. Kurt Kinzer from the DNR calls me back, says, hey, that's ours. I'll look into it. And he called me back about an hour later, said, Darrell, he said, I'm taking care of this. I trespassed them out of here, you know, and that was their deal to take care of that, and they did. But when I called the mayor, it's like, you know, they kicked the can down the road, but the DNR, boy, they was right on that, right? You know, the homeless, I'm all for helping people, man, but when these homeless- But when these, when these homeless have these camps, that, what they'll do is they'll live there, they'll trash it, needle it, throw needles everywhere. And then they, and then someone comes in and trespasses them, and they just walk away. Why aren't they made to stay and clean that up like a restitution for, if they cared about our community, they wouldn't do that. And if they really did care, they could clean that up and help at least get a bag and say, hey, man, I'm at least picking up a bag to do my part. You know, I'm just concerned about camps. I'm all for helping people, man, I really am. I help people when I can. Another thing too, I was coming up Patterson the other day, that day, I think it was Monday or Tuesday, it was real nice, real pert last week, it was real nice, pretty, I mean, it's like almost 75 degrees. Seen a guy walking down Patterson, had one of them little litter getters. And he had it looking good down through there. I mean, it was, I couldn't see a spot of paper nowhere. I thought, man, guy's doing good. Got about halfway up, almost to that homeless place, big old homeless camp in the woods, plain as day, right alongside the road, I thought, something ain't right in this picture. Why, why, you know, why is that happening right there? These, these people are in the woods, they're in the weeds, and a lot of them don't, you know, they're just here for the beer, you know? And, but that DNR guy, man, he was right on that. You know, I, they're everywhere, man. You go in the woods, I'm concerned about the people in this town. What about one of you guys' daughter, grandma runs through the, a trail and run into one of them camps and something happens? I hope it don't, but that's, that's going to happen, man. And I'm going to leave on this one, I'm kind of a comment guy right now, this, these are comments and stuff I'm looking at and just, but I got a question. I've been, not a question, but comment real quick, now go into a question. I got a minute 22 seconds. But you know, I've watched city council for 40 years, Mayor Allison, Ferdinand, and all them guys, even today, I still watch you guys. I enjoy it, I like, I like knowing what's going on in the city, right? I'm retired, I retired in October, 37 years retired, but I'm still concerned about things. And, and I'm a guy too, if there's a compliment, I'll call and say, hey, man, this guy's doing a great job. But you know, if there's something that I'm concerned about that is bothering me and my community, I'm going to air that too. But I will say, hey, man, this guy's doing a great job, man. I'm the compliment guy, plus I'm the guy that's going to try to get some stuff done. But my last deal here, I'm going to leave on this one, I got 36 seconds, man, that's working out great. God bless Bloomington, man, and God bless all you guys. But I would, this isn't personal, don't get me wrong, guys, but this has bugged me for a few months. I've got a daughter buried in Rose Hill, getting ready to bury my ex-wife in Rose Hill Cemetery in the next few weeks where a marker gets back from the marker place I've done ordered. But a while back, Steve Bowlen made a comment when he's talking about the homeless, put a homeless camp in Rose Hill. Was you serious? Or is that just a, I mean, what was that, Stephen?
Mr. Ruble, your time is up, and we do not have questions for council members to comment.
Okay, cool, man, I'd sure like to know about that, thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Ruble. If there are no further public comments, either on Zoom this evening or from the chambers?
I think I do have one comment to read from Sam Dove, and that comment is, I let public know their roads closed to work on pipes, I want to let public know. And then members of the public who are participating on Zoom who would like to speak can use the raised hand function in Zoom to do so. You can find that function by clicking on the reactions button at the bottom of your screen. I don't see any raised hands presently.
Should we give just a minute since you just made that announcement, if anybody is tuned in from, from home? And again, there will be another opportunity for public comment at the end of tonight's meeting for matters not on the agenda for anyone that would like to join us by Zoom or here in, here in chambers.
Still no takers.
All right, let us assume there are none, and we will move now to any appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any this evening from any of the interview teams? I am not seeing any appointments, so we now move for legislation this evening for first reading.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 2205 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2205 to vacate public parcels regarding two 16.5-foot wide alley segments located between West First Street and West, West Second Street, South Rogers Street and South Morton Street. City of Bloomington Redevelopment Commission petitioner. The synopsis is as follows. The petitioner, City of Bloomington Redevelopment Commission, requests vacation of two segments of alley right-of-way, the first between West, West First Street and West Second Street, and the second in alley that runs east and west between South Morton Street and a 16 and a half foot platted alley to the west in order to facilitate Phase 1 East of Hopewell Development. The right-of-way will be replaced with new sections of South Madison Street and West University Street.
Thank you. And I will refer Ordinance 22-05 to the committee of the whole that will meet on March 30th beginning at 6:30.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 2206 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2206 to amend Title 8 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection to establish a historic district regarding the Johnson's Creamery Historic District. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends Chapter 8.20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled The List of Designated Historic Districts in order to designate Johnson's Creamery as a historic district. The Bloomington Historic Preservation Commission, after a public hearing on March 10, 2022, recommended that the structure be designated historic with a rating as notable. This rating was based upon certain historic and architectural criteria set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 8.08.101E entitled Historic District Criteria. Local designation will provide the protection needed to ensure that this property is preserved.
Thank you, and I am referring Ordinance 22-06 to the committee of the whole to meet on March 30th beginning at 6:30 PM. However, the council may vote to consider adoption of this ordinance later in tonight's meeting. Should the council adopt Ordinance 22-06 tonight, it will not be referred to the committee of the whole meeting next week. And with that, let us move into legislation for second reading and resolutions.
Madam President, I move that Resolution 2208 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 And will the clerk please read?
Resolution 2208, resolution to opt back into opioid settlement pursuant to Indiana Code 4615-2. The synopsis is as follows. Resolution 2208 allows the city to opt into a settlement with opioid manufacturers and distributors pursuant to Indiana Code 4615-2.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move that Resolution 2208 be adopted.
Second. Thank you very much, and with us this evening to present, I believe we have Ms. Beth Kate, our corporate attorney.
Think this is on, you can hear me all right?
You can, you might want to make sure it's right in front of you and speak up.
Okay, well, the first thing I want to say is congratulations to Councilmember Sims on your anniversary, that's tremendous, absolutely. Thank you very much for having me this evening, and I believe I am joined by Jonathan Knoll on Zoom.
Do you want to know what this screening is? There's Knoll and all, it's not a choice.
Oh, I don't, actually. Okay, no, that's fine. Okay. Great, so I'll, I'll continue, thanks. So I'm here, I'm joined shortly by Jonathan Knoll at Coen and Millard, who are the counsel to Bloomington and many other local governments in the opioid litigation.
Good evening.
Maybe I won't be able to see him, but do we have him, and again?
Can you hear me? Good evening, everyone, I apologize, it's trying to get on through Zoom, but we're, but I'm here, good evening.
So we don't have a visual of him? You do, but no one else does, we'll only be able to hear him.
There we go.
There we go. And everyone, bear with us, this is the maiden voyage of the, of the hybrid meeting, so thank you, and we appreciate you, Terry and Heather, for helping us with our tech. All right, please continue.
Okay, sure, thank you. And thank you, John, for joining. So we are here to both present and answer any of your questions that you may have about Resolution 22-08. Just briefly, as the council may recall, at the end of last year's legislative session, the state made some legislative changes that really made it quite unfavorable for local governments to participate in the opioid settlement that the state was developing, and the level of participation monetarily for local governments was quite low. It would have barred us from participating in further settlements and so on. In this legislative session, the state legislature has changed that, they passed law that has amended 41615, sorry, my eyesight is so bad right now, I'm looking down at my own writing and trying to make it out. But, but the upshot of it is that they have really solved the problems with the prior legislation, and the current level of participation for local governments in the state settlement is 50% of the recovery. And that is divided up into 15% fund, which in the legislation talks about it being for unrestricted use. I'll say a little bit more about that in a second, and John may have some comments on that as well. And then 35% being targeted for best practices opioid treatment and care and prevention programs. The thing I wanted to say is that in the settlement agreements themselves, actually about 85 to 86.5% of the funds and the distribution have to really be used for opioid-related treatment and recovery programs and care. But as I believe the council has an exhibit to the settlement agreement, it lays out what that includes, and it's actually quite inclusive in its scope. So it gives quite a bit of flexibility to the cities to use the funds to meet the needs that were generated by the opioid crisis. So to date, Bloomington's portion of the settlement proceeds has been calculated at And the city and outside council have agreed to significantly reduce the amount of our outside attorney's share of the distribution to 8.7% of the recovery, and that is down from 33 and 1/3%. And so that comes to about $185,000 in attorney fees, precisely $185,319.99. And the proceeds from the settlement distribution are going to be paid out on a schedule with the first payment, we believe, being made in April. The legislation gives cities until July 15th to opt back into the settlement, but because of the anticipated April distribution, we are recommending that the city go ahead. This is a good deal, it is very good, actually, and it is better than we believe the city will be able to do on its own. So we recommend that the city do, in fact, and the council approve the resolution so that the city can opt back in to the settlement and participate in that April distribution. With that, I want to go ahead and again sort of recognize Jonathan Knoll, who together with his partners at Coen and Millard, has been doing yeoman's service on behalf of local governments in this litigation, and he is much more familiar with details of all of this than I am. Among other things, as you all know, I think I'm quite new to this position, but I am happy to try to answer questions, and I know John is as well, so if you have them, please.
All right, will Mr. Knoll want to make any brief comments before we go to council questions, or shall we just go right there?
No, thank you, I thank Beth, and again, good evening to the council, and it is an honor and privilege to represent the city of Bloomington in the opioid litigation. I think Beth summed it up very well, and, and I will just say for the council purpose, the first payments are looking originally by April, maybe towards May, and then some additional round of payments coming in the summer.
Thank you, I will now go to council for any questions, Councilmember Bowlen.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I'd like to ask the council, so you were our city's council, did you also counsel any other cities besides us? That's Mr.?
Yes, yes, Coen and Millard represents the majority of the, of the litigating local governments that, that have filed suit to deal with the opioid crisis.
So have you made the same agreement with other cities that you did with us for the distribution of the recovery?
I, I'm not going to go, well, in far as the distribution for recovery, that, that is determined by the statute and settlement agreements.
Determined, I'm sorry. Could you repeat that?
You said determined by the statute and the settlement agreements.
I see, so I just, I'm just trying to understand, like, because it says here in the memo that the city and outside council have agreed to reduce the amount of our attorney's share, is that typically what happened across the state with all the other municipalities?
Okay.
Oh, I, I thought you were talking about the distribution. In terms of the fee agreement, that, a reduction in the fee, yes, that's consistent with our clients, with the rest of our clients.
I'm having trouble understanding him.
It's the same agreement.
Okay, so every municipality is kind of having the same agreement? Okay.
Yeah, because this, what happened is broadly speaking, the, and John, you can fill in the details for me, but the, part of the negotiated settlement was a reduction in attorney fees to a, down to a certain percentage, I think it was 15%, and then the state set up a backup fund. And so what Coen and Millard has done is accept a lower rate of recovery on attorney fees, not just for Bloomington, but for other.
It just implied that this was a unique agreement and not one that was, okay, that helps a lot. I have one other question, but I'll, I'll hold it. I yield, Madam Chair. I yield.
Councilmember Scambolori.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Ms. Kate, thank you, Mr. Nolan. You mentioned that the first tranche of payments would come in April, and then, Mr. Nolan, I think you said those payments will happen again and might occur as late as the summer? Is that accurate? Or is there a larger window in which we could expect to receive multiple payments?
There's definitely, sorry, John, go ahead, yeah.
The first payments from the distributor settlement are scheduled to be April, more likely May, and then from the Johnson, Johnson settlement, the first payments are scheduled again around in July of, of this year, continuing on according to the payment schedule of the national settlements.
And is there? It's a multi, oh, I'm sorry, I was just going to add, it's a multi-year payout.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, and is there a time by which we must spend these funds?
John, I'm going to defer that question to you, and the question was, is there a set time by which we must spend these funds? I believe the answer is yes, we will be held accountable in that regard, but I'm not sure of the exact date.
There are annual reporting requirements under the statute that we'll discuss further with, with council. But there, but the city will have to be required to spend an annual report on the use of the funds.
Perhaps you could share a timetable with us on that?
Yes, be happy to.
And then I have one more question, but I can wait.
Okay, for first round, we have questions from Councilmembers Pymont Smith, and then followed by Councilmember Smith.
Yes, thank you. The, the memo that we received from the council office said 70% needed to go to the purposes outlined in the agreement, so related to opioid treatment or, or those, those types of things. And, but I thought I heard you say something about 85%? Did I get that wrong? Is it 70% that needs to go to that, to specific purposes?
Under the, the agreements, it, well, the statute would give a different impression than the settlement agreements themselves. The statute talks about 15% being in an unrestricted fund for cities and municipalities, local governments, with 35% going toward best practice. governments, with 35% going toward best practice opioid treatment and care programs. But the settlement agreements themselves require that between 85 and 86.5% be dedicated to those uses. And what I was saying before is when you look at the list of those uses, it actually is a very lengthy and kind of broad schedule in terms of what it covers. John, did I get anything wrong there? Do you want to jump in and correct it?
No, I think that's accurate, and certainly, you know, for the council to keep in mind that there are, you know, there are other defendants where there could be potentially free through settlements, and we just don't know how those will be dictated. But that's something we'll talk with council to make sure there's guidance and compliance, both under the statute and under the settlement agreements.
Did that help? Were you able to?
Yes, I think so. I have a follow-up. May I go ahead, or should I wait?
Sure, go ahead.
So as this, as these funds come into the city, who will, will the council have a role in deciding how they are spent? I mean, does it roll into, is there a special fund created within the city that will then need to be appropriated by council, or does it roll into the general fund of the city?
To be honest, I don't have an answer for you on that right now. I don't know. I believe we are going to have to make sure we account for those funds so that they are only used for approved purposes. So whether that means that we have to go ahead and segment them into a separate fund, we very well may. But I will get back and confirm on that unless, John, you want to add anything. Certainly, it is true that the funds are going to have to be used for approved purposes. And then we're supposed to get further guidance, is my understanding, from the Attorney General's office, actually, as to what that's going to look like. So some additional guidance in addition to the schedule that you all have already seen. So.
Mr. Knoll, do you know if there has to be a special account created for these funds within the city?
That's something I will defer to Beth on that. Obviously, the money would come directly to the city, and I'll talk further with Beth about that.
Yeah. I mean, I will tell you, I haven't seen anything that talks about dictating a specific way to put the money in a named fund. But I think there is absolutely going to be an expectation that we ensure that the funds are spent for what they are approved for under the settlement agreement and the statute. So.
I would agree with that, especially since there is the reported requirement involved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you for the report. There was a recent news article about additional funds from Purdue Pharma in the settlement. Does this include that, or do we expect that there'll be a subsequent payout of funds or another round of this kind of funding?
One of the things that makes it viable, I think, and appropriate to opt back in now, is that we can participate in future settlements. And I do think, and again, I will defer a little bit to John this because he's in the thick of these negotiations, but I do think there may be future settlements anticipated, and we would now have the opportunity to participate in those as local governments, whereas before we could not.
That's correct. By opting back in, Bloomington will be able to participate in future settlements that resolve claims involving both the state and local governments. There have been reports about Purdue Pharma, potential resolution of bankruptcy. There's another manufacturer that is also in bankruptcy, and then there's other defendants that the city has sued, and those cases will continue on in the court system, and certainly there is a global resolution that will allow the city to participate in those as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims.
Thank you for the report, Ms. Kate, and Mr. Nolan for his input. I'm glad someone said his name, because I didn't want to be too informal, and all I could see was John. So, but thank you very much.
I'm sorry, it's Knoll like the hell. Sorry about that.
Yeah, it's Knoll.
Knoll, okay, thank you. Try so hard and still get it wrong. First question I think I have is, have you mentioned possible additional settlements? And I don't know what the timeframe is, but my question is, as we approach and have other settlements, will those require additional resolutions to be brought before the council? Or is this a catch-all, cover-all?
I believe opting in now is going to be all we will need to do in order to participate in future settlements, by way of a resolution from the council.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, may I have one more? This is pretty similar to Councilmember Piedmont Smith. But as we get the funds, and I guess from abatement strategies, and oh, there's a list of stuff. I'm sure, I'm sure the administration, your office and other folks, have devised some sort of a plan, and I know it can't be concrete because we don't have the funds and we don't know a lot of stuff. But how have those conversations gone, and what could we expect from an abatement strategy standpoint?
I'm not the best person to answer that question, and I think it's early days in terms of planning out what the money will look like, partly because we are still awaiting other guidance on how the funds will be spent. And we are even still awaiting things like what will the schedule look like to Councilmember Scambolori's question for payout. So I think it's early days yet, but we absolutely can provide information as it emerges on that, and I would anticipate conversations between the administration and the council about where the money's going and how it would be spent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional first-round questions. Councilmember Rallo.
Well, just to follow up to see if Council Attorney Lucas has any, any input into this question about council participation. It's not explicit in this resolution whether it's going to be placed in a fund for council discretion in terms of its appropriation, or the discretion will be on the part of the administration. Do you have anything to add?
I don't know if you've ever asked, other than what Ms. Kate and Mr. Nolan have offered, I think it's right that it's early, and the question before the council now is whether to opt in the settlement or not, and how the funds will be used, something that we'll need to await additional guidance on. But the uses at least should be consistent with the exhibit that was included in your packet, and it can be used for those purposes. But the actual procedure for putting the funds to use, I think we'll need to await additional guidance for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional first-round questions. And seeing no first round, I do believe Councilmembers Scambolori and then Councilmember Volan.
Yes, actually, Councilmembers Piedmont Smith and Sims covered my question.
Oh.
And when some additional information is available on the process for allocating these funds.
We'll be happy to provide it.
It'll be great to get that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Volan.
Well, I think Councilmember Sims asked, started the question that I wanted to ask, but I wanted to see if we could drill down just a little bit. Do we know when the administration plans to spend the 2.1 million?
When the administration plans what?
Are you going to propose it in one year or over time? When do you plan to use the money for its intended purpose?
I think it's, honestly, it is too early to have an answer for you on that. I think we are just starting to take a look at the money coming in, and I have not been part of those conversations, if there have been any conversations yet on it. But I would anticipate keeping the council updated on where we're going with that. In terms of, you know, the money, remember, the money is being paid out over a series of years, so all the money's not going to come in in 2022.
That's helpful to know, yeah.
Yeah.
But the other question I would have is, we may not know exactly what it's going to be spent on, but can we at least get a sense of what category? Would it be personnel, supplies, services, or, as I think might be preferable, on capital? Because, you know, this is a lump sum payment, and the problem is ongoing. Is there any intention of the administration to use the money for capital purposes that would serve the needs that the money's intended for?
Well, like I said, I have not been in conversations about this. I would anticipate that anything within the scope of what's allowable will be before people in the administration who are looking at what would make the best use of the funds before you all in terms of evaluating where you think the needs are best served by these funds. So as we find out more about it, like I said, I'll be happy to update the council on this.
Well, at the very least, then, do we know which department might be the one that would be coming to us with proposals? Would it go to Community and Family Resources, or?
Certainly would anticipate that they will be involved, but they may not be the only one involved. So it's, you know, we're really, it's such early days, all we're doing right now is asking for approval to opt back into the settlement so all of this can get underway. This is really the first step, and this is really a very recent development that we're trying to go ahead and capitalize on now so that we can get in front of that first payment and the money can start coming in. You're absolutely right to be asking these questions, let me say. It's no good to have money without knowing what you're going to do with it and who gets to make those decisions. So the questions are great questions. It's, we're not at that stage yet. This really has just, we've been opted out this whole time, but this legislation came up and has presented us with this recent opportunity. So that's what we're here to do tonight, and there'll be more to come.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Councilmember Sims, and then Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
I think Councilmember Piedmont Smith had her hand up first.
Then you can go first.
Not that it matters.
Thank you. Do we know how much money the Monroe County government is expected to receive, and are they also opting back into the settlement?
My understanding, just from conversations with their council, is that they support opting into the settlement as well at the county level. I do not know the dollar figure for their distribution. I don't know if John is still with us, and if he is, if he might be familiar with that and can say.
I'd be hesitant to go into that because we, into the amount, because we do represent my run credit, but my understanding, though, is that their commissioners did approve and did opt back in today.
Thank you.
All right, now, Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. Ms. Kate, I don't know, and it may be still too early as far as settlement payouts with any type of frequency, it may just be too early for that. But I'm trying to think, how are we determining the frequency of payout? Is it from the medical companies or something, or is there any way to anticipate that? And I know you said it'll be over a period of years, I get that. But is there any somewhat consistent, or we just let it happen as it happens?
Okay, I'm going to defer that question to John because the payout schedule, I think, may still be under some development. So in terms of when we're getting these payments spread out over the years, John, do you want to jump in on that one?
Right, the payout schedule is based on the settlement agreements themselves, and the payments will fluctuate based on the percentages of the settlement. In terms of getting into specific numbers, it's a little early to do that per year because we, we need to see first how many, you know, at the end of the day, how many local governments, not just in Indiana, but across the country, are going to be participating in the settlement. But that's something I could talk, I will talk further, we'll talk further with Beth about. But in terms of the payout schedule, it's, that is based on the settlement agreements themselves in terms of the length and how the payments fluctuate.
So it's over a series, I believe, the distributor agreement is over a series of, I want to say 18 years, and J&amp;J is 11. Is that correct?
That, that's right, I think, yes.
It's a long period of time. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, and I'll look forward to hearing more moving in the future, and how we can help that specific and particular population with these funds. So thank you, thank you both very much.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions from council? Councilmember Scambolori.
Yes, thank you. And thank you very much for the exhibit, too, because that made this a good deal more concrete. As I read that, it says qualifying block grantee shall choose from among the abatement strategies listed in Schedule B. All right, it says choose from the abatement strategies. It doesn't say choose specific projects. I don't know if you know the answer to this or not, but I at least like the question on the record. Is it an expectation that whatever strategy is chosen is administered by the city? In other words, if there is a center set up, is it the city's responsibility to run those centers, or can a nonprofit run it, and can we grant support it, or do we not know?
I, to be honest with you, I can't tell you that I've asked that question and gotten an answer from someone, but the way I read this, it would not have to be run by the city, that is. It would have to be a program that meets the criteria that are listed in that schedule that you've seen, but it would not necessarily have to be actually operated by the city. It does have to be a sort of best practices type of program.
And so partnerships may be very acceptable as we.
Yeah, I believe that's right. John, do you know anything other than that, or different from that?
Right, I mean, it's, you know, the money has to be spent, you know, according, you know, to the guideline of the settlement and the statute, but, you know, if the city were to partner with the county or adjacent cities on programs or something, you know, with the state, because the state is also going to be having money from these settlements to spend throughout the state, those are options, it could do so.
Sure. And if that involved a contract with a nonprofit or something like that, partner, I don't have any reason to believe that that's outside the scope of this.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Anything else? We now go to the public. If there's any comment this evening on Resolution 22-08, please come to the podium, state your name, sign in, please. And of course, we'll have the opportunity to hear anyone from the Zoom connections.
Hi, my name is Dave Askins with the V-Square Bulletin. Because Monroe County is not my client, I can tell you that their settlement amount in their meeting this morning was $2.9 million was the raw figure, and if you subtract the 8.7.
I'm sorry, Mr. Askins, can you pull the microphone up? It's hard to hear.
Should I start from the beginning? Should I start from the beginning?
Please, we were having difficulty hearing you.
Sorry. Because Monroe County is not my client, I can tell you the settlement amount. That was a part of their morning meeting where they did, in fact, opt back in. $2.9 million was their raw number, and subtracting the eight points, or, yeah, the 8.7% of attorney fees, that leaves them with $2.689 million. I don't, I don't know why exactly. Monroe County gets more than Bloomington.
Thank you for that. Any additional public comment from the chambers? And seeing none, do we have anyone from Zoom?
I don't have any takers presently. Members of the public who are participating on Zoom can use the raised hand function. They find that at the bottom of their screen usually in reactions, or they can send the meeting host a message in the chat.
Thank you. We'll sit for just a minute, or less.
I still do not have any takers.
All right. With no more public comment, we will come back to the council for any final statement or any additional questions. Can we start with questions? Councilmember Rallo.
Well, I'm curious about the, Ms. Kate, do you have any insight into why the, if the amount of settlement for the county is indeed larger? Why is that the case than what the city receives?
Yeah, in terms of the calculations, I mean, the settlement agreement sets out the method of calculation. And again, I think we may have dropped John. He may be able to speak to some of the specifics of the settlement agreement calculations, but, but that's dictated by the settlement agreement and the, I believe, the evidence and the material that was first supplied in terms of damages and so on. I'm kind of a little bit beyond my personal interaction with these issues at this point, but, but the calculations, like I said, are supplied by the settlement, and then they're applied to information supplied by the jurisdictions as to, and calculate as to what their impacts have been.
Oh, so.
Yeah, I will say that the settlement agreement talks about, based on impact metrics, and there's a weighted formula based on different impact categories, and that's, and that's consistent with the settlement agreements.
So the number of impacted individuals is probably a large determinant?
It's based on impact, I, some of the, the numbers including, you know, pills, opioid use disorder, deaths, I mean, there's weighted metrics that go in, that go into that in terms of the allocation formula.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a final comment? All right, seeing no final comments, we are ready for the question.
Call the.
Oh, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, I'm happy to support this. I hope that there will be future settlements, especially from Purdue Pharma, which I don't think is included in this one and is mostly the biggest culprit, I think, in this opioid epidemic. I think that this, we're going to have a lot of deliberation ahead of us to determine how best to spend these funds, especially because the dispersments will be over a number of years, so it'll be difficult to strategize. You know, if we want to have a capital expense, then it would have to be something that could be paid over time. If, if it could be a program expense, we'll definitely need to have partners to, to run the program, you know, consistently over time, since it sounds like our increment would certainly not be enough to, to run a strong program. In this context, I would also urge the city, the mayor's administration and my colleagues to work with the county so that we can pool our funds together and serve our community better in mitigating the impacts of opioid addictions and hopefully reducing the number of people who are suffering from opioid addictions. So that's all my comment and I will be supporting the resolution this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comment? Councilmember Bollin.
Yeah, I wanted to say I appreciate that Ms. Kate said that we had great questions tonight. I hope that she takes them back to the administration because we're looking forward to answers as soon as she has them, as they have them. But more importantly, I hope that the administration has gotten a sense of the scope of our concerns as they formulate an appropriation ordinance to bring to us and that I think we would like to be, as the council, involved in development of that ordinance, but ultimately it has to be, as every appropriation ordinance does, comes from the administration. So we're very much eager to hear what plans there are and I just want to make a pitch for, there's only $2.1 million in the settlement, there may be more dollars, but no matter what we do, we could spend the money on personnel to directly address, or you know, categories one, two and three, to directly address the opioid crisis and the people who it's affected by, but I'm eager to see some kind of spending that keeps paying off over time. And so if there is some capital resource that we can spend it on, that, you know, we can always say that it was paid for through these settlement funds, I think that it would be, I hope it will be a net benefit. Anyway, that's my thought, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Final comment? Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. Again, thank you for the report. I will support this as well, as we support it, or I support it, when we opted out in the first place to give, to increase our options. And now it's, it's, since we've worked through all that, it's to our benefit to opt back in, so, and we anticipated, so I can support that. I do want to say that as we move forward and we start receiving parts of the settlement, I've heard a couple of comments from my colleagues with regard to collaboration and particularly with our county friends, broad collaborations. But one of the things that I don't want to lose sight of, opioid addictions, once we've got programs to deal with that, I'll be interested to seeing how we separate those from the other associated addictions and what we could get into as far as distribution from the rules. So I don't want us to get into, we're going to have to deal with some of the opioid stuff, but a lot of the opioids may have alcohol addictions as well or something else, and I'd like to know how we'd be able to work with that. And I also want to, speaking of broad collaborations, I think entities such as like the public, Monroe County Public Library took a big hit from our community, from our homeless population with regard to the opioid crisis, and I want to make sure that their leadership is part of this discussion, since many of the, the ills of what we're dealing with impacted them as well. So I'm happy to support this and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? And seeing no final comments from council, may I call on the clerk to call the roll on Resolution 22.08?
Yes, Councilmember Bollin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Lurie?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Rosenberger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That passes 900. We appreciate the report and we will look forward to the additional work ahead. Thank you.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 2206 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And will the clerk please read?
Point of order, Councilmember Rallo, this, because this ordinance was introduced earlier tonight, this requires a special motion, so if the council would likely consider this tonight, the motion could be made to introduce and consider Ordinance 2206 for adoption at the same meeting in the same night that it's introduced. And I will note that that motion would require unanimous consent of those present to adopt and then to allow the council to then consider a motion to adopt the ordinance itself.
Do we need to strike what we just did and start over?
I believe so. Okay, then I will move to that Ordinance 2206 be introduced and read, I'm sorry, is the, the appropriate language that?
I would suggest a motion to introduce and consider Ordinance 2206 for adoption at the same meeting that it was first introduced.
Okay, then it be considered in the same evening as, as was introduced.
Did he, did he state that correctly this time?
Sorry, missed the.
The language is I move that the council introduce and consider Ordinance 2206 for adoption at the same meeting and on the same night.
And should that motion pass by unanimous consent, the clerk can then read the title and the synopsis again.
So with the motion made, we have a second?
Second.
All right, and will the clerk please, does clerk need to read it?
No, before, before the clerk reads, this motion is debatable and again, would require unanimous consent of the council to adopt.
Okay.
So if this motion fails, the ordinance would not be introduced again and would be referred to the committee of the whole next week.
As it is debatable, would it be appropriate at this time to ask if the staff would have any comments to make before we go to this vote or do we need to go to the vote first?
No, the motion is debatable, you can ask questions, councilmembers, if they have questions, can ask those, if they'd like to hear from staff or the property owner of the property in question, you're welcome to invite comments from them.
Okay, well, at this time, do, Councilmember Flaherty, do you have a question or would you want to hear from staff?
I'd be happy to hear from staff, but I wanted to, barring something unforeseen, I intend to vote against this motion. We received a fair amount of new information today with conflicting opinions and, and sort of interests of, of the property owner and, and staff. I was at work all day, I've not had the time to review those materials. I think it would be imprudent to consider for, for final action tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Bollin.
Councilmember Flaherty speaks for me. I had intended to vote against reading it on the same night because, first of all, in general, I don't approve of non-emergency things being taken up in the same night, but secondly, there is new information that deserves consideration, so I'll be, I'll not support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone want to hear from the hand staff briefly before we move to the vote? That be appropriate?
I would appreciate commentary from our staff.
Mr. Zodi, would you like to just say briefly a few words?
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. Good evening, councilmembers and members of the public. I do want to note that Gloria Cullen-Brania, our Historic Preservation Program Manager, Mike Arnold, our Neighborhood Compliance Officer who inspected the smokestack originally, and Daniel Dixon is here from Legal if you have any other questions. I'd like to maybe ask what the will of the council is, we have, and what the most appropriate information would be to share, maybe you just want to respond to questions. I have a couple of things I want to maybe put on the record for tonight briefly, but we also have a presentation about the historic designation, which may not be appropriate for right now, but I want to make sure we're giving you the best information at this particular time in the procedure. So I'll stop there and.
Advice? Is it appropriate to actually have a presentation or?
I think debate on this motion extends to whether the council should consider adoption of this ordinance tonight, so to the extent the council needs to hear information to make an informed decision on that motion, it would be appropriate. I think getting into the substance of, of an eventual motion to adopt the ordinance itself is beyond the scope of the current motion, if that helps, so.
So maybe I pass along a few bullet points and maybe not do the presentation this evening, is that what I'm, what I'm hearing? So, well, I do appreciate the opportunity to speak and thank you all for your conversations about this issue. I think I've spoken to all of you with the exception of Councilmember, one of you, one of you over the last week about this, and obviously we have an important situation going on with the Johnson's Creamery Smokestack with the safety issue, the city of Bloomington issued an unsafe order on the structure in January and then reissued an order on March 11th after we received an updated structural engineering assessment done by the owner, which is, which is Peerless Development, who I believe may be on tonight as well, and their attorney is present. So there is a sense of urgency here. I do want to be respectful of the process and I hope I've conveyed that in conversations with you all. The new information, the decision that would be before the council, as you know, is whether to designate the Creamery property as a historic district. The HPC, Historic Preservation Commission, recommended a map to you that was submitted in your original packet materials. Earlier this week, the property owner expressed, well, late, last week and then we sent to the council office early this week, a revised map at the request of the property owner that would have narrowed the scope of that. And then today, I understand there was information sent to the council for an additional revised map, so you do have that, and that's, I think, the new information some of you are talking about. So as you consider those maps, we'll be happy to answer questions tonight or any other time prior to next week. Councilmember, President Sandberg, I think you've mentioned you recommended this for the committee of the whole next week. In addition to the map revision that went out today, as I read the material after it was forwarded to me, was that there was an issue about the, a question about the alley vacation. As you know, there's a development proposed for the north part of this lot or this property. The Department of Plan and Transportation has no record of an alley vacation, so we do not believe that that alley is currently vacated. That is a question posed in the materials. And we don't know that that is, is significant per se to the drawing of the historic map, so I'll leave that there as an opinion of, of our staff. There's also a note, sort of an emphatic note about the Beeline Trail and the farmer's market. The Beeline Trail, as many of you know, was fenced off, a section of the Beeline was closed January 13th, a section to accommodate for any potential failure of the smokestack and what would be included in that. The farmer's market will open as scheduled on April 2nd. This is not, the, the smokestack being in the condition it's in is not prohibiting the farmer's market from opening, so I want to make sure that is clear to all of you and the members of the public. That is not what is stated in the materials you received today. So I think those things are important to, to let all of you know tonight. Lots of information about, about the condition of the stack and the, by and large, though, the question before the council is whether to designate the Creamery property, which we do believe in agreement with the HPC is, is a worthy structure of historic designation. So I'll stop there, answer questions, I want to thank my fellow colleagues for joining tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there are any additional comments from council, Councilmember Sims?
Thank you, I do. I will say that I had intended to support this legislation and I'm not so sure if the term point of order is necessary at this point, but we've got two colleagues that have indicated that they're not going to support this and it requires a unanimous vote. So I would like to suggest that we vote and then if it fails, then we'll get full reports next week at the committee of the whole.
Thank you for that because the, the motion on the table is to hear this in one night and it looks like that is not going to succeed, so shall we just go ahead to the vote? Is that, is that appropriate? Yes, Councilmember Rallo?
I ask a question of Mr. Zodi. Mr. Zodi, you've mentioned that this is urgent, so could you describe how urgent this is?
I'm, I'm, I'm a little trouble hearing you, my part, part of me.
The urgency, the question is the urgency. So we're deciding this evening whether or not the council's going to weigh in tonight or not for two weeks.
Sure, that's great.
So, so is that, what, what is the nature of the urgency? How urgent are we speaking?
Sure, I appreciate the question, it's a good one. So what we know is that the smokestack, particularly as it relates to this question for the council about the designation of the Creamery, the smokestack and the unsafe order issued on the smokestack in January, we know that there had been structural issues with it for a number of years. The owner pursued a state grant, which was not awarded and had been in conversations with the city for the last nine to 10 months, I would say. We did an initial inspection of the smokestack around the end of the year, realizing that the, through drone and sort of initial visual assessments, didn't find any disagreement with the previous studies. We issued the unsafe order, knowing that it was, did have structural issues. The time between January, that first order, January 13th, 11th, 13th, and March 10th, when the HPC recommended this to you all, there was an updated structural engineering survey done. And I want to defer to those who are able to comment further, what would cause the smokestack to fail? And that is your question. I will say that I think we would all just concede that it could fall on its own, something could disrupt it, that there, we are under that sort of prospect that it could just fail on its own structurally. The force, forces, according to the structural engineer, that would take down 140-foot tower like that are an F2 tornado wind, which would be approximately 120 miles an hour, excuse me, or a seismic event. We do live near the New Madrid and the Wabash Valley fault lines, so an event like that that could happen again, as we've had some of those in the past, could cause the, the smokestack to fail. It is leaning about two to three feet to the southeast. You notice if you go look at it from the southwest corner, you'll see, notice it going like this, you probably saw on your packet a picture, standing at the bottom and seeing it kind of leaning over at you. So we believe it's, it is urgent, but I will say that during my conversations with some of you, you know, will the work begin to bring it to a safe height yet this week? And the answer is no. So we have, we are looking at a critical timeline here and we're trying to strike a balance between the necessary process, the logical steps put in place to protect the Creamery structure as well as the smokestack, do that in accordance with public law and understand that we are under some urgency with the smokestack here. So my answer to you is I'm, I'm not going to tell you tonight, councilmember, that it's, I think that thing is going to fall tomorrow, it could. The structural engineering report, which is in your packet, if you haven't had a chance, it's very lengthy, so I would take a look at that risk. The Risk Department here at the city thought it necessary enough to close that section of the Beeline to make sure we have a, the public is protected, and we do have that public safety concern. So we're trying to strike that balance tonight, so, and we do, I appreciate the attention to the urgency of this and would encourage you to, to do as much as you can, as fast as we can, that's what I've told some of you, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Mr. Zodi, if, if the city were not, and the HPC were not pursuing historic designation at all, that is, if we weren't to consider this question, could, could the, the stack have been demolished already? Like, could the owners have already applied for that permit and done that work?
So the, when the Creamery was, the Creamery has been a notable structure for a number of years and that means on the sites and structures list, and Daniel Dixon, if I may slide over to him, if I'm not answering your question adequately. So the, when the Creamery was, the Creamery has been a notable structure for a number of years. And that means on the sites and structures list, and Daniel Dixon, if I may slide over to him, if I'm not answering your question adequately, councilmember, as a notable historic structure, the Creamery is on the sites and structures list that we have here in Bloomington, which, which puts it under scrutiny by the Historic Preservation Commission. The option is, it is not located in a historic district, but it is a notable structure. So if someone, the owner, wants to intervene into the historic structures of the Creamery, that requires them to come before the Historic Preservation Commission to ask for a permit to demolish, which starts the demo delay, the demolition delay process. The historic preservation then has a binary choice to make. Release the demolition delay, which allows the work to proceed, or recommend it to you for, for designation. That process was not done through the demolition delay process, but the HPC proactively said, we believe this structure is significant, we're going to go ahead and recommend it, because of the sort of urgency of the issue here, to get this process moving and to make sure we were staying on track. If the Creamery, and by association, the smokestack, were not designated, the, the smokestack could be demolished by the owner. And Daniel, did I leave anything out there that you would add? There were my notes. Anything else?
Thank you for reminding me of those details. I forgot about the demolition delay possibility in this particular case.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to clarify John's last point. Daniel Dixon, Assistant City Attorney. The, to clarify that, if, if the ordinance to pass the legislation to designate this as a historic site fails, then there is no local historic protection on the smokestack. It could be demolished without any oversight or anything by the Historic Preservation Commission. Thank you, David.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, this question is perhaps for our council attorney. Would it be possible to call a special session to follow or proceed the committee of the whole next week, so that we would have one more week to consider the, the new information we've received, but not wait two weeks in, due to the urgency of the, the safety concerns?
Yes, I believe so. If the council wanted to schedule that tonight, it could hold the committee of the whole meeting to be followed by a special session, so that you could vote on the ordinance next week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Rollin?
Just like to point out that the events that Mr. Zodi describes as potential, signaling the death knell of the Johnson's Creamery smokestack, there's never been an F2 hurricane tornado in Bloomington. And I lived in Eaganman Hall on the 13th floor in 1987, when we had a 5.0 earthquake that caused the building to wave two feet to either side. While I absolutely agree that we are on the New Madrid fault line, and that we, you know, have all, the community has always been at risk, there are no end of buildings besides the smokestack that are in danger if we have the, you know, the kind of event that would bring down the smokestack. So, you know, I continue to insist that while the, this is an emergent circumstance, I would even agree that it's urgent, I don't think it's urgent that we need a special session. That we are, our process, thanks to the committee of the whole, is still very brief at two weeks. The, the reasonable date that this would be held, heard, final vote would be April 7th, or April 6th, sorry. It's a week after next week. So I would urge everyone to, let's, there's clearly a lot to be heard here, a lot to decide on. Let's do it in our normal process. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zodi. Can I ask, does the city have a position on removing the smokestack from the historic designation as some of the information we've received today suggests? Is there a position that you all have? The position of the administration would be that we would not support the complete removal of the smokestack. And the first reason of which being that, that is decided by the Historic Preservation Commission. If, if, if they were to see the matter, which they will tomorrow night, so the HPC has a regular meeting scheduled tomorrow night, they'll see a certificate of appropriateness, application from the owner. And so we believe that it needs to be taken to a safe height as soon as possible. That is the first step to make it safe. We have recommended that the Historic Preservation Commission approve the reduction in height to 60 feet, and then sort of a condition, a next step, following the work being done on the smokestack, to remove it to, to bring it down to 60 feet. Would you be to come back to the Historic Preservation Commission and tell us, tell them how the smokestack and the history of the Creamery might be commemorated following the reduction of the, of the smokestack? So we believe there could be an interpretive installation of some kind there that will sort of speak to the history of the site. So that is, that is where the administration is taking its position, and what we support. And that is, that is illustrated in the, in the staff recommendation for the HPC tomorrow night. So it's sort of a two-step. We, our number one priority is to get it to a safe height as soon as possible, and that would be to no higher than 60 feet. Does that answer your question? Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Zodi.
Thank you. Anyone else from council? All right, at this point, where do we go from here? We can go right to the vote, because again, the motion is to, to not hear this in one session tonight, is that correct?
The motion is to consider this for adoption at this meeting. So a yes vote is in favor of considering this ordinance for adoption tonight. If there's any no vote, then the motion would fail, and then the council would, for President Sandberg's referral early receiving this, would be referred to the committee of the whole next week.
Got it. So there's no public comment at this point? We can just go right to the vote? All right. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Scambalory?
No.
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Smith?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
No.
Rosenbarger?
No.
Rollin?
No.
And is that, that's everyone, right? Okay, so that fails three to six. So this will be referred to the committee of the whole on the 30th at 6:30. Thank you. We are now ready to move on to additional public comment at this point, and I will call on our assistants to see if there's anyone from Zoom who may want to speak on matters not on tonight's agenda, or anyone here in the chambers who has not had an opportunity to speak, who would like to come to the podium.
Members of the public in the Zoom platform may speak by using the raise hand function in Zoom, and I show one individual on Zoom at the moment who would like to comment.
All right. You may unmute them. And will we be able to see a screen name, or just hear them?
This is person with the screen name Michael Cordero. And they should be able to unmute themselves now.
All right, Mr. Cordero.
Hello, everyone.
Greetings.
Can you all hear me all right?
Yes, you will have five minutes.
All right. My name is Michael Cordero. I am the owner of Peerless Development. We are the owner of the Johnson Creamery building. I don't know if this is, you know, a time to, to make any comments. I know you had said one...
Excuse me, Mr. Cordero. We have moved this to our committee of the whole meeting on March 30th. So next week, you would have an opportunity to speak, but not at this time. We've already had this on our agenda this evening. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
There are no other raised hands on Zoom, and I do not have any messages in the chat indicating individuals would like to speak.
All right. At this time, let us move to our council schedule. And there is at least one item, and of course, there's something that was raised this evening, about the possibility of a special session. But we will start first with the work session.
Yes, just a reminder, the council does have a scheduled work session this Friday. There are several items that may be ready to hear about this week. First is a proposal that the mayor has talked about publicly, related to a local income tax increase and related revenue package. I believe the mayor is planning to come and preview those items this Friday. Another item is an ordinance for a utilities rate case that the administration would like the council to consider before May 1st, due to a change in state law that requires the repeal of the utility receipts tax. So there is some time urgency with that item. I believe Vic Kelson will be in attendance to preview that for the council.
All right. Do we need a show of hands as to who will be able to attend the work session? Again, that will be held here in chambers, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I'm seeing...
Will it also be heard? Yes.
All right. So seeing a number of hands here for the work session on Friday at noon.
And if the council would like to schedule any special sessions, if it can do so now, otherwise we'll proceed with the meetings that we currently have planned.
All right. Any entertainment of the idea for a special session following next week's committee of the whole? I'm not seeing any. So we will proceed as normal with that. All right. Any, if there's not anything else, we are finished this evening. I will ask my colleagues to stick around. We do have a couple of photographs we need to catch up with because of the COVID years. So stick around. We need to clean off the, the desk here. And at this point in time, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
This first meeting back is adjourned. Thank you.